This regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission is now in session. It's Thursday, February 2nd, 2023, 6:00 PM. We are conducting this meeting in the Carabelle City Hall chambers, and we will open with a prayer by Commissioner Allen. He's going to do our prayer for us, excuse me, Pastor Commissioner Allen. And he's going to do our prayer for us, and then I will leave him in Pledge of Allegiance. So please stand.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we can come together tonight as citizens of this lovely community. We ask you to be with us in all of our wisdom, that we might do that which would be best and most appropriate for our citizens, and give us the ability to work with each other and carry out our purposes here in harmony with your will. We ask this in the name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. Please silence your phones, and if you would like to speak under the public comment section or any of the agenda items that we have, please complete a speaker card and give it to our city clerk here, Ms. Keisha. And your time at the podium is a maximum of three minutes for the public comment, and if we have time, I'll allow you, under our agenda items, a little longer, but a one-time visit to the podium. And so first up, we have a consent agenda with the January 5th, '23 Commission regular meeting minutes, and then the January 17th, '23 public hearing and special City Commission minutes, and then our attorney's invoices for December. So has everyone had an opportunity to review this? Do we want to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do we have a second?
One second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. We are at the public comment section of this meeting. Is there any public comment? And this is for an item that's not on the agenda, and yes?
I've got Ms. Debbie Jordan.
Okay. Then just come forward, Ms. Debbie, and say your name, and I'm sure you know the routine.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to start off, first of all, off-topic, for when I originally came here to let you know how much I'm a Landarch Village resident. I cannot thank you enough, all of you, for putting your fire department in place to help us as our fire departments reorganize. That means a great deal, and there's a lot of us that have a lot of gratitude. Knowing that I only have three minutes, I'll need to get down to where I'm here. In the year 2020, Landarch Village Association acquired a piece of property from you a lot known as Oak and Munroon in Landarch Village. It was acquired through a quitclaim deed with a reversionary clause. If the property failed to be used or if they dissolved, or if it failed to be used in the benefit of the community, then it would no longer, that would always, the words say, automatically revert back to the city. I went to them in the winter of 2021. They purchased, the deed was signed on the 15th of January, 2021, and I went to them to one of the meetings. I really can't tell you whether it was January or February, but I went to them and said, I noticed that you haven't filled out your corporation papers with the Division of Corporation since 2018. And so you show up as inactive, and I would like to know how you managed to acquire property when you're in an inactive corporation. And I was seeing correspondence between them and the city, where they refer to themselves, two different pieces of correspondence, where they refer to themselves as a nonprofit, and that they were the best suitors of the possible nonprofits in the city to be caretakers for the property. Since that day, ever since, it's been padlocked. It's still got barbed wire and chain link fence on it. No one is allowed in. The derelict building still stands. It looks like a hazard and a haven for rodents and vermin, and it is of absolutely no benefit to the community. I've asked them several times to please come up with a plan for this, and I've been more and more vocal, to the point where they'll talk about what they're going to do, but nothing is being done. And I don't, they are, this time, they got reinstated on March of 2021. The fact is, they were still inactive during that time. And the people of the community would like to see this being used for our community for the purpose in which it was intended. I don't know what the solution is, but I at least want to make you all aware of that. And I don't feel it's right, Mike says that it's definitely not right. And that's all I wanted to say, and thank you for taking time to listen.
All right. Well, let me toss this over to Mr. Hartman. He's familiar. He did see the recent email that you sent explaining that, so he'll give some insight.
Okay. So just to address a couple of the different issues, and then the first issue being reinstatement, that they weren't active, because just as you say, you go online now, it shows them being reinstated. But under, and under Forest Statutes 607, 1422, when you reinstate, it's retroactive back to when you were dissolved, administratively dissolved. So it basically fixes any problem. So if you reinstate, it's as if you were active the entire time. So the inactive, the administrative dissolution that occurred in 2018 is of no effect once they reinstate, and it looks like they have. So that wouldn't be a legal issue. And then the, as far as the reversionary clause in the quitclaim deed that you mentioned, it's absolutely in there that it talks about the, if the property conveyed ceases to be utilized by the city of Landarch Association, in this case benefiting residents of Landarch Village, entitled to the property shall automatically revert. I would think that, and I'm not familiar with how the elections or how officers or the direction of how the association is handled, but that sounds like you're active in it. So that might be, I don't know, it'd be up to the commission, but that since it's so recent, it was January 2021, that I would think it's up to the residents of Landarch to make use of that. And if the board is not expressing the will of the Landarch residents, then maybe, I mean, that's where the residents come in, and they vote in people that'll use it in a way that the people want it to be used. If you run into big problems there, I'm sure you can come back, and we would reconsider, the commission would reconsider, if it's in fact not being used for the purposes of residents. But the reinstatement, the administrative dissolution is not of any legal effect.
Okay. And her sentence, or am I done? I don't, do y'all have any questions here or anything for Ms. Debbie?
I understand fully what the attorney said. Just from my perspective, Ms. Debbie, I think it's something that you and the folks, people, citizens of Landarch should work out with whatever that organization is called, Landarch Association, for the use of the citizens out there. I worked, I was here on the board when this transaction expired or happened, and it was a goodwill for the city of Carabelle to try to help the citizens of Landarch, and hopefully they'll continue to use that for the best use for them. And I don't, for me, I don't see us getting in a position here to kind of tell them how to, what the use is of their property, as long as they're using it for the use of the citizens of Landarch. But I feel like that's something for the citizens of Landarch and the association to work out.
And are you, are you on the board now?
I'm a member of the association.
That is what Mr. Hartman was saying, that, you know, if, just like it goes here in the city of Carabelle, if citizens aren't happy, they run against the current elected officials and come in and try to do things that make them happy. So if there's some way that you or someone else can try to get on the board of the Landarch Village Association and put that property to use in a way that you see fit or someone else sees fit, that would be, that would be the thing to do. But if it goes on for time, time goes on, and they're not using it for the public, whether it's a dog park or a playground or what have you, then maybe come back and let us know.
Okay, yes, I will do that, because I think it's, I'm being met with a lot of resistance, and so from the board, so I would just keep you in touch from time to time.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have any, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay. We'll move then to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Walden?
I have nothing.
Okay. And Commissioner Brown?
I do, bear with me, because I just scribbled it down when I got here. This weekend, Saturday, February 4th, there's a big event at our Crooked River Lighthouse. During the day from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM is the country market, and this is going to be an extended country market. I talked to Steve Allen yesterday, and he said there's about 40 vendors this week. So that's amazing. And then in the evening, they will be showcasing the new exhibit for the historic...
Farnell.
Farnell lens. Thank you. There's going to be music, dancers, food vendors, and of course, lighthouse climbs, and that's from 6:00 to 9:00, and it's called the Crooked River Park Fest. And then the following Saturday, we have the Carabelle Culture Crawl hosted by the History Museum in downtown Carabelle from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And that is a pre-celebration of local culture, art, music, history, food, and fun in downtown Carabelle. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Melander, do you have anything for us?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Commissioner Gray?
Nothing.
Nothing tonight? Okay. Thank you. And I have a report. I gave you my Christmas gift with no report, so I'm back into the routine now. So this is my report for February 2nd. First of all, I want to let the commissioners know that I have signed the agreement with the ARPC for the city to sponsor the ARPC in conducting the vulnerability assessment for the 15 cities in its nine-county region, and that certainly includes Carabelle. This analysis will determine potential vulnerable and critical assets that will be impacted by using their 2040, this is year 2040, and their year 2070 sea level rise and storm surge projections. And these days, most of our storm water management grants from the DEP now require a vulnerability assessment report as part of that grant application. And then on January 27th, the Department of Economic Opportunity announced an $18 million in funding is now available for rural communities through the Rural Infrastructure Fund. And qualifying projects for this grant include planning, preparing, and financing rural infrastructure projects. And the grant is very similar, the qualifications are similar to the CDVG program in that it must either produce job creation, capital investment, commercial revitalization, or economic diversity. And the deadline to apply is March 13th this year. And so I did ask Ms. Courtney and Mr. Sullivan to follow up with our grant writers to see if the city might have a project that would qualify. And Mr. Sullivan followed up that same afternoon with Kimberly Horn. Those engineers, they already knew about the funding opportunity, and they're preparing to submit for water and sewer and power connections to the new hangars and terminal building to be built out at the airport in 2024, '25. So if this, if we do get this funding, at least for the airport, that money would be leveraged with the FDOT aviation grant. This is going to be building the hangar and terminal construction. And then Courtney has followed up with Mr. Fox.
And I have not heard back from Mr. Fox, but I have also followed up with Mr. Russell Large. And he and Charlie and I have talked about some projects that we think that might be eligible.
Okay. And as I was reading this, the qualifications, it reminded me that Ms. Courtney and I received an invitation from Carabelle, excuse me, Appalachia College City Manager, Mr. Wade, and Mayor Brenda Ash to meet with them to see if somehow the two cities can put together a larger project for Triumph Funding. And Triumph Funding is the same thing. You've got to have job creation, and or capital investment, commercial revitalization, or economic diversity. So we'll see, and we know, we all tried that. We tried for the airport and the city in years past when it came out. We just couldn't come up with any project. We've had phone interviews with them, but we're going to try it again. Okay? All right. And then on Tuesday, I addressed the State Representative Jason Schoep and our newly-elected State Senator Cory Simon at the Franklin County Legislative Delegation public hearing. And I was proud to have Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Melander and the entire Allen family and my husband attend in support of the city of Carabelle and myself. And I thank you all for taking time out to attend. It was, if you stayed for the whole thing, the travel there and back, it was about a five-hour process, so I appreciate it and thank you. But my presentation included a detailed description of the condition of Baywood Drive, and I advised the delegation that the FDOT SCOP funding for Baywood Drive repairs and improvements is a must for the city of Carabelle, and that this is now a $2 million project, and our general fund just cannot manage this funding. And I just pleaded with them to continue and increase the funding for the FDOT SCOP for municipalities program throughout the state. And I asked for them to continue funding on the hurricane loss mitigation program. This directly affects our citizens and their property, the CDVG grant, the FDOT aviation grant program, and FERDAP grants. And I did end with a plea for assistance with providing affordable workforce housing, not just in Carabelle, but throughout Franklin County. I explained to them that we desperately need rental rate programs that our actual working workforce will qualify for, for our teachers and law enforcement and medical personnel. So that's about all I have on this Groundhog Day. He saw his shadows, so we have six more weeks. And by the way, have you all, have you all seen the crosswalk warning signs out there? How do y'all like that? Is it, have you tried it out or anything?
Tried it.
Uh-huh. Have you tried it, Ms. Tamra?
I can reach three of the four of them. It does slow them down.
When you're trying to cross, it slows them down? It won't slow them down when you're not, when the lights aren't flashing?
Oh, no, I know. I go across those every day to the hospital.
So it doesn't seem like it's slowing traffic?
Wasn't for me when I was crossing, they must have been a hurry that day for those days.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, and we'll go on to Mr. Hartman's report.
Okay, I have none.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And then Ms. Courtney?
All right. I sent out department reports. I realize you guys didn't get a water and sewer report, but I will get that to you first of the week. And if y'all have any questions, you can always call me or come in and send me to chat any questions on the street roads or the police department reports. We have two new employees hired for the streets and roads department. So both of those positions have been filled. We do have a position open for CRA landscape employee, landscape and maintenance employee. That will be open until we get enough applications. I didn't put a deadline on it. I've got two applications and so forth. We have requested TDC funding from Mobi Matts for informational signage in Kissimmee that will be taken up at their February 8th TDC meeting. And I did notice, this is off-topic, but I did notice where they funded some playground equipment for the lighthouse.
On the St. Rennelly?
They're saying that's a beach property, excuse me, beach access, beach recreation.
Because it's on the beach.
So we're, I guess, not eligible for that. P&amp;Z and the CRA are advertised for the volunteers. And then we have one opening on the CRA board and at least two on the P&amp;Z. The deadline to submit for that is February 3rd, with the term beginning in March. So far, I have one for each, one for the CRA and one for the planning and zoning. So we still need some planning and zoning volunteers. We could put that back out on Facebook. I can put it back out, and the ad should run two weeks. I don't know if that was last week and this week or the two prior weeks, but it was running in the paper for two weeks.
So they have to have their letters in by tomorrow?
By February 3rd, yes. And so far, I have two. I have one for planning and zoning and one for CRA.
Are they two different people?
Yes.
Hey, you never know.
We have our signage, downtown parking signage is installed. We have some of the golf cart designated roads installed. I went ahead and ordered just to go on our main roads, but Russell was going to get back with me and let me know if we needed any more signage. And then we did install our duck signs around the parks, too. That is, I do have another thing. Ms. Tamra, last month, you requested to close off Avenue B for the Culture Crawl. And the event has grown now, and I think because they have an anti-car show. And so now we're asking to close from Highway 98 to Avenue C, in addition to Avenue B.
I will make a motion to close Marine Street from 98 to Avenue C.
Okay. And that's Southeast Avenue C. Okay. So we have that motion by Commissioner Brown to close Highway 98 to Southeast Avenue C. Excuse me, close Marine Street from Highway 98 to Southeast Avenue C. That's by Commissioner Brown. Do we have a second?
Off second.
Okay. And that's Commissioner Gray. Is there any discussion? All in, any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Okay. And that motion carries. Thank you. All right. You're getting it back by Frank Mathis. I could tell by the way he would read if he wanted to talk.
I just wanted to refresh the dates of that.
Okay. Please do.
What were the dates for the closure and the time?
February 11th from 10 to 3.
8.
8. Just for setup.
8.
8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Okay.
I've been asking to close that year, so I'm very happy.
Okay. Do we have anything else, Ms. Courtney?
That's all I have.
All right. Ms. Keisha?
I just have a few dates. February 16th at 2:00, we will be having a planning and zoning meeting. I've already got something for that agenda. February 20th, we will be closed for Presidents' Day. February 21st is our CRA meeting at 1:30. And our next commission meeting is March 2nd at 6:00 PM.
All right. Any questions or comments for Ms. Keisha? Okay. And thank you very much. And then we'll move on to Mr. Russell Large with the Nobia Consulting.
Thank you. I have quite a bit to update you on here, so feel free to interrupt me with questions on our existing small communities outreach project. The contractor had a few final punch list items per the CEI's review, so those, I think those are done. I received the email yesterday, and I'll be reviewing those tomorrow. On our new project, this would be for Baywood. We have prepared the rural road assistance application for the initial construction phase, and prepared the cost estimate there is just under $500,000. And Courtney has that to review and comment. The deadline for that is about March 17th. So they've got a little bit of time, but I wanted to make sure we got that in Courtney's hands to review. On our lighthouse project, the sewer low-pressure main passed pressure testing. The water main passed the pressure testing. We're now waiting for the final results on the water main, bacteriological testing. So they have one more round of testing to be there. They have begun to install grinder pump stations and make connections to individual lots. Okay. On our summer camp project, we met with the city staff 17th of January. St. Joe's is in general agreement with the concept of a development agreement. We had a discussion with Bridget Precise about that. That is something they're accustomed to. They've done that with different communities before. So Mr. Hartman is working on some draft language, and the next step would be for that draft language to go to Bridget for reviewing and comment. Okay. On the Carabelle cemetery expansion, the due technical was ordered. We also prepared a memo regarding the governing standards for cemeteries. That's just a summary of the standards, and we provided that to Courtney. On the Ryan Drive drainage improvements, we did receive the survey, and the design and analysis is underway for those drainage improvements. I'll skip over the Avenue C boat parking, and I want to come back to that and get some input from you there. On the golf cart crossings, we prepared a letter in accordance with the Traffic Engineering Manual, Section 514, and submitted that to Kimberly Tool. She's the traffic operations engineer for District 3. And then I'll take a look at the assigned locations with Courtney tomorrow and provide any additions or revisions.
Okay. I have a question on the letter of request that you sent for the golf cart crossing.
Yes.
Did D3 offer you a timeframe on their response, when they might respond on their decision?
No, but I'll find out.
Okay. I mean, you know, you don't have to, I mean, don't push them. Don't get them irritated.
Sure.
So, okay. Do we have questions? Yes.
I have one back on Baywood, grant request. I know that, and you mentioned the monetary amount of $500,000, correct?
Right.
So we've, I know we broke it down into a smaller request.
We did.
Just in case, just in case, there were funds available, more than that, did they know that we want more, that we need more than that?
Yes, I verbally had that conversation with them. What I also plan to do is submit a second application for the balance of the work there, so that they have both with this cycle. And that was suggested by the grant administrator to do that. So some total project will be submitted, but that first initial part is what the focus would be with this, with this cycle.
That's what I'd like to see us do, is if the money is available, if the money is available, we could give the entire project fine. But if we have to accept just part of it to get what we can get, that's well and good.
Right. Okay.
Maybe we can get something out of the rural infrastructure grant that can come back and do some, do some work out there as well. But the thing is, that rural infrastructure is for economic development.
Right.
So that's tough.
I think that's tough. You're right.
And Triumph as well. It's the same thing.
It does, it does make it difficult, especially for a project like that. It only serves residential property.
Okay. And then your boat, boat grant?
Well, actually, I had a few, had a few more.
Okay.
This is a two-pager this time.
Yeah.
So Charlie, he's got some improvements he wants to do at the wastewater treatment plant Headworks. So we met with him earlier this week, Wednesday. So we're just getting started on that. And then the Landarch West sewer improvements, met with Charlie about that also. There's some improvements that are needed at the VAC station in Landarch. So we're preparing that funding application to go into the Water Management District. That deadline is 22nd of February. And then lastly, Charlie is requesting a new water supply well. Well number four, you may recall, was pulling sand and had some failure. It has bad water quality. So the idea here, there is to shut down well four and construct a new well near the Carabelle plant, the existing plant, near well three, actually. So we're beginning to work on that.
We actually voted this in.
We actually voted this morning to put a new well test over the bridge, but now we're thinking that it may be more feasible, the water's good there, we've already got a well there, and it might be easier just to place a well next to the one that we already have, because if, the only well we're using now is well four, and if it goes down, or well three.
Well three.
Well three, but if it goes down, it's going to be a lot to get well four up and running, we really need a backup supply. So he does have some of that funding already, but we'll just be moving it from over the bridge back over there.
So, and yes, we allocated money on the American Rescue Plan.
Eighty-five thousand, I believe.
Right. And well four, the water's not, not good anyway.
Right.
No good there.
Right.
So, all right, very good, and then we'll move on then to your overflow parking lot.
Okay, this is the, this is the layout that we see, Courtney, would you mind pulling up the next one that has the...
It's with it.
It may be, it may be the second, right. Now...
Scroll up on that first one. It's not the same picture.
It was in the same email. I think that's it.
That's not how long it's...
I think that's a different email. I've sent you a few today.
Yeah, that's a different email. It's Avenue C boat ramp parking.
At 1:45.
What is it, 1:45? That's muted.
Okay.
That's it. Auto turn.
The auto turn. Okay, there we go. So what we did here, we used for, for, for design vehicle, we used Ford 250 crew cab and a boat and trailer at 35 feet long.
Is that somewhere in Fisherman's? I don't know.
Okay, your pardon?
I think that's about as big a boat as, and truck and boat, I think, as you can...
Yeah, which you're going to be hauling down.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I can do.
Okay, so there's 52 feet between the rows of parking there. I did want to point out that on the, on the top row, well, currently the traffic flow here is one-way from left to right. What we could do is make this two-way, the top row of parking, we could angle in the opposite direction, vehicles could enter from both directions, and if they prefer, they could back into those spaces, rather than nose in and back out, so that, that is an option that we could use here.
I think keeping it one-way is simpler.
Right, I do too.
So, they're coming in, sorry, they're coming in from Avenue C?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about earlier, and it, just thinking about it, the city could have it all on its side, Russell, one-way, parking with one-way travel in and out, they would be less likely to back into the other side than they would if they were mixed in, in angle the way they're parking in. So that's my thinking, I don't know from you, your point.
Yeah, I, I do, I do think it's more, more organized, less, less chaos if, if multiple vehicles are in there, so I, I do think that would, but just wanted to bring that up as an option if you thought that was important.
And Commissioner Walden, what do you think?
I, I would either have one on the outside.
Oh, okay, well, I mean, you do pull a trailer, a boat from time to time.
I don't, I really don't have a lot of time right now, I'm not feeling it real good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't go ahead and have a follow here.
Okay, okay.
But Russell, you said there's 52 feet between the parking spots from side to side?
Right.
In the middle?
Right.
Those long trailers and trucks, and it sounds like you've taken into account those backing and turning and backing into someone else, the tightness of it, and the number of spots you got there, you're comfortable with that?
I am.
And, well, they're, they're pretty, you know, sharp, so when they come out, they're going to be...
They should.
They should.
And that's the reason why I was thinking the one-way would be better.
And what, what materials are you proposing to use?
Yeah, I, I would propose here to use stone, like DOT 57 stone gravel, so yeah, that's a good sized gravel, and we would lay down a fabric beneath it, create a weed barrier, I think that's important here, and then we can use the thickness of that gravel, the void space in the gravel as our stormwater volume. And then for delineating the spaces, we had a couple ideas, I think the simplest would be to use railroad ties, they're commercially available, you can buy a pallet of those from the hardware store, with a rebar so that they don't move, that's probably the simplest, cheapest route to go. We also thought about brick pavers, but have a little concern that they may migrate, so that's, that may not be the best option.
Well, we, so you just told me earlier, your next process is permitting and then going out to bid.
That's right.
And fishing season is coming up like tomorrow, I think, but we would probably, I think we want to get moving on this as quickly as possible, if you all approve of this and would like to move forward, I would say we would go ahead and motion and, or direct Russell to go ahead and start the permitting process and then follow, follow the bid process.
It's okay, but I have another question.
Okay.
Russell, you mentioned brick pavers, moving, I totally agree with you, but I have a concern with rock doing the same thing, why wouldn't we use just road base, thick road base, compacted road base? But you also mentioned using the thickness of your blue scrabble for part of your stormwater responsibility, but anyway, do you see what I'm saying about the rock moving, there's going to be a lot of twisting and turning in there, which I know you realize it.
Yes, that's, that is a valid concern, and there would, there would be some maintenance involved in smoothing the rock out. Over time, it, it may migrate, you know, the topography here where this would be placed is relatively flat, to put down base, my concern there is, you know, if we use the void space in the rock as the stormwater volume, we need to make sure that it percolates, so if we have that base underneath it, it may not, or if we just use the base material, it, it wouldn't percolate very well, now...
But aren't you going to put a base underneath that rock?
We would compact it to probably a load bearing ratio of 40, and then place the filter fabric on top of that, and then the rock, and then we would ask the contractor to roll that rock maybe three passes with a Viper toy roller, in that the rock would then consolidate.
Well, you're the expert, but that's my only concern, is that rock moving too?
Well, we have out there on Golf Beach Drive, out there, the McKissick Beach entrance, we have a constant problem with nothing but road base out there, and it is, it is a, it's a disaster when it develops potholes and the water, the stormwater won't percolate out of it. It just stays there as a, as a, you know, a water basin, and our environmentalists are very upset that road base was put out there, in the first place, it should have been some kind of rock or gravel or something like that, but we have a hard time keeping that maintained. Now that we have a tractor, we can share the maintenance with Franklin County, you know, sometimes they come out and do the whole, their portion of the road and the city's responsibility is a portion, and now we're going to try to approach Franklin County and, and share that, let, have them repair that whole area one time, and then we'll come out the next time with our tractor and do the repairs on it, but it's, it's difficult. And out there at Patton Park, isn't that the lime rock road base as well? And we have a difficult time keeping that smoothed out, that's so the traffic can use it, unless the rain gets on it and it gets rut, it just, it just stays as like clay, it just holds its shape, whatever heavy equipment or, or big trucks that have been in there.
Right, and, you know, I think both of those materials would require maintenance, the road base and the rock, it would require maintenance.
Yeah, and you, and you're going to have road base underneath that rock, you're going to have some road base underneath that rock, right?
My thought is that the incentive material is sandy enough.
Very sandy.
Right, that we can, that we would be able to get a load bearing ratio of 40 on the end, on the, on the existing material that's there, so I'm, I'm not convinced we'll have to bring in road base under the rock.
I, I hope we don't, well, I've, in this sand, I've had some experiences that, in this sand, if you don't stabilize it, the rock's going to go right on down there.
Well, we had that lime rock there.
That's right.
There is some lime rock.
So I'm just saying, there's going to be some kind of base underneath it anyway.
Yeah, and, and the fabric that we lay down will, will prevent it from, you know, sinking into the material.
All right then, are we satisfied, or do we want to have, have you go back to the, what do we want, Mr. Russell, to go back to the drawing board, are we satisfied with what he's presented for this today?
I'm satisfied, I feel like we've got more parking spaces than we originally thought.
Yes, I never, I never thought we would have that much, so it's good, and, and good, plenty of single vehicle parking for whatever happens at the water plant in the future. So, well, we could have a motion to direct Russell to move forward with the permitting process for this, this plan, this site plan as he's presenting.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, and do we have a second?
Sorry.
Okay. Is there any, any more discussion?
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
What were the railroad ties for?
Okay, and I don't know your name, tell me your name.
Oh, Daleen, Daleen Seager, Daleen.
Daleen, Ms. Daleen Seager.
Yeah.
Just ask, what are the railroad ties for, and I'll toss that to Mr. Russell.
This would help delineate the spaces, so you can't really put a, you can't paint a stripe on top of the rock, so we would use those railroad ties to delineate each space.
So they would be used in place of the lines?
Correct.
And they would be above the stone?
They would be flush with the stone.
Flush with the stone.
Right.
And then my other thought was, whatever you put there, you wouldn't want it to track on the tires down Marine Street in front of the businesses, just a thought.
Okay, and Ms. Seager said that whatever, whatever material is put there, she doesn't want it to track on Marine Street.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, and then this, this is, it's a DOT number 57 stone, it's a, it's a lime rock stone, but it has a, it's a hard lime rock stone, relatively large, I would say, somewhere inch and a half to two and a half inches in diameter, so it's a larger stone, so it's not a material that would, that would track on the pavement.
Okay, thank you for that question, and is there any other discussion? Okay, all right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries, and thank you for the submitting the plan and telling us about it, I appreciate it, thank you for your report, Mr. Russell. Let's see. Okay, we're moving to the Advisory Board reports, and we have Carabelle Waterfront Partnership, do you have anything, Ms. Tamara?
Everybody, come to the Culture Crawl.
Okay, she said, everybody, please come to the Culture Crawl on this week, next weekend. Okay, thank you for your report as well. And then Mr. Sullivan for the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board, do you have anything?
I don't have anything, unless, unless you got a question.
Okay, do we have any questions here? He's reported on his environmental impact report, tree removal for the stormwater system repair, and we had good news, one of our aviation advisory board members suggested that we submit for insurance reimbursement on some major electrical storm damage out there to the beacon and the lights out there, and that was put forth by Miranda, she was diligent in following up on that, and they did reimburse, was that the entire amount, 15,000 today?
It was the entire amount.
That's fabulous, so that's good, that put, that was putting a little strain on their budget, they have a small budget, so, and then you're, you're working on your water bills out there to find out what, oh, it's a leaky toilet, and the toilet's been repaired by an airport tenant.
Yes.
Okay, on his own initiative, all right, very good, okay, okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on then, there's no, we've got a, that's it, do we have any questions for Mr. Sullivan? Okay, then we'll move on to our public hearing for Resolution 01-2023, and Mr. Hartman, if you'd read that for us.
Okay, this is Resolution 01-2023, it's a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Carabelle approving amendment of the community redevelopment plan, providing authorization to amend the budget, providing for findings, providing for effective date, and the findings, whereas the City of Carabelle is a Florida municipality duly incorporated with all the rights and powers as provided in Section 2B, Article 8 of the State Constitution, whereas the Carabelle Redevelopment Agency was established in 1992 pursuant to the Chapter 163-4 statutes under the Community Redevelopment Act of 1969, whereas the City of Carabelle has delegated to the CRA all powers available under the Community Redevelopment Act of 1969, Chapter 163-4 statutes, whereas the current CRA plan is in need of updates to accurately reflect the completion of capital improvement projects, plans for future projects within the CRA district has recently expanded, and whereas this current CRA budget may need to be amended in order to adequately augment a detailed list of capital improvement projects within the expanded CRA, therefore be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Carabelle, Florida, that Section 1, the city finds that the CRA redevelopment plan should be amended as shown in the attached amended plan, Exhibit A, the amendments delegate certain enumerated powers to the CRA pursuant to Chapter 163-4 statutes, the purpose of the amendments to the plan is to provide a clear delegation of authority necessary for the CRA to implement capital improvement projects within the expanded CRA. Section 2, the city finds and authorizes amendment of the CRA budget in order to provide funding for certain projects set forth in the CRA plan as amended pursuant to Section 189.016, 4 statutes, Section 3, effective date of this resolution shall take effect upon its adoption by the City Commission and signature by the mayor.
The CRA Board has been working on this five to six months, as, as the City Commission, to update our CRA plan, and I motion to adopt the City of Carabelle Resolution 01-203 for update of our CRA plan.
I'll second that.
All right, and so that motion is by Mayor LaPass, seconded by Commissioner Brown, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right, under quasi judicial hearing, we have none this evening, and then, let's see what we got next, there's new business, and new business, we have one item, and that is discussion and possible action regarding closing a dead-end portion of Northwest Avenue L, and that is requested by Mr. Aaron Murray, and is Mr. Aaron Murray with us? Would you...
my front yard, over Georgia Avenue. And I guess, it's all hours in the night, till 3:00 in the morning, people just driving through, kids. And I've got babies playing in the front yard, and they whip it through in little cars. You tell them to stop, and the next night, they're back.
I, I drove out there, took a look at it. I didn't drive on your property. I approached it, approached it from L, then went out and went back around Georgia and took a look, and I, I saw, did anyone else go out and take a look at that? So, and I have, I have empathy for you, because we, when we first moved here or bought our property where we live now, we had not vehicles, but pedestrians walking through our yard like that from one street to another.
Yeah.
And we had, we had to end up putting a fence with a gate. And I, I think that you probably want to have access to Avenue L yourself, and you want to have access to Georgia as well.
'Cause my brother lives off of Avenue L right there.
Uh-huh. I saw that. That's, that's a nice setup. Very nice. But, you know, we, we haven't been in the habit, since I've been on board, we have not been in the habit, and I've been on board 11 years, of granting, granting property like that. Once we, once we do it, it's, it's like it opens a can of worms, and then everybody wants their piece of, their piece. So, have you thought about putting, well, let me ask the board what they think here first.
So, anyway, you just block it off, let, giving it to the community, it's still going to the city?
Well, I think we, we blocked off Fifth Street and had to open that back up, because we had people driving through and doing things that they shouldn't be doing out there. Do we remember that?
Yeah, I remember that. I'd like to have them have it any way possible.
I know it. Have you, have you thought about fencing in your, your yard and putting a gate there?
That blocks my brother off, being able to come through. My dad owns the first four, I own the three, and then he owns the back, so that'll block the whole, him completely off of the rest of us.
If you, if you, if you put a gate, how does that block him?
I mean, you can put a gate, that's what I'm asking, can I put a gate on that road?
Not on the road. I, well, I don't know, we'll have to ask the commissioner.
You don't?
I don't know. I, I, I'm saying to fence it.
The people are coming in here and driving out.
They're coming, yes, sir, straight through the yard over the other road.
They're coming in and driving, but they're on private property here. They're using this piece of public.
Yeah.
It doesn't feel any weird.
But now, back here, let's scroll out, Ms. Courtney. And Courtney and I looked at this, that's a, that is a nice piece of property right there. And it comes out of Wellburn Avenue, has access, and Georgia Avenue, and Avenue L, and then the next, the next roadway up there, I guess that would be Wellburn that goes through East West, or, or, I don't know what that road is. That, that person who owns that may want to plait that out someday. Or maybe that person doesn't own it, but the next person who owns it may want to plait that out and put some houses in there. And they might want to have access to that property. And we have to think, in my mind, we need to think seriously about cutting off access to that property there.
I'm of the same opinion about it. Also, since I've been on the board, and I kind of started the way the mayor did, and I've only been here five years, a little over, but we've had, since I've been here, we've had a request for the same similar situation. And we declined that request to close the street, and for reasons that have already been expressed, you never know what the future's gonna bring. I would, and we encouraged the last ones, and I remember who that was, that we encouraged them the same way the mayor has mentioned to you, you might want to put up a fence. And I don't blame you, I would, if, you know, if it was mine, I'd do the same thing, and I sympathize with your issue of people running across your personal private property. But to close a street that has the potential for needed use, and again, the mayor just stated, we can't shut off anyone's access to their private property. We couldn't do that anyway. So, that's, that's kind of how I feel about it, too. I do, do sympathize with your issue about the people running across your property and abusing your property.
And, and I do, I, I would not, I would be very upset about it. Now, the day I talked to, pretty much when we received your request, I talked to Courtney about it, and that day, that's the day you ordered...
I ordered a sign, the sign that says, dead-end street, no turnaround.
There you go.
Dead-end street, no turnaround, and they're gonna post that out there on that avenue, new sign out there, Avenue L, to try to deter these people from, from coming down there. I know you don't want them to come down there in the first place and, and then have to back out like, like we did. But I, I would advise you, as, as Commissioner Melander is agreeing, to put up a fence with a gate. And, you know, we can't, we can't just, you know, abandon that roadway and then give you that property. I mean, what you're asking for is the equivalent of a full-city lot, and that's, that's a fair amount of property. But, you know, I, I'm, I'm proud of you for coming in and asking. I mean, all you can do is ask, you know? And, and we, I understand about, and all, we can ask the police department to patrol out there, as well, but there's a police officer that lives out there.
When we're sleeping, we got a lot of foot traffic out there also.
A lot of foot traffic.
Yeah, all through the night, while we're sleeping.
Why is that?
And, and I do understand that, and I'll share this with you. And you know where I'm at up here. I have foot traffic coming through my yard, believe it or not, at, at night. I mean, it's not terrible, but I do have foot traffic coming through my yard. Now, if it be my choice, I could put up a fence. So far, knock on wood, I haven't had an issue with whoever's walking through my yard at night when they do. But it would be my choice, I could, I could put up a fence if I wanted to do that. But anyway, we'll help any way we can, and I feel like, that's my point of view, we'll help any way we can, just like Courtney's gonna try to do the signs and those kind of things, and, and you have a live-in officer out there that can kind of keep an eye on things. Anyway... So, we gonna start cracking them.
Very good.
But anyway, but thank you for coming, and, and for my point of view, we'll help any way we can. I appreciate y'all.
Okay, thank you. Good to see you. Come back, please.
We have a sign due tomorrow.
So, they'll have, they'll have that sign up maybe by Monday. It's supposed to be delivered tomorrow. All right, then, there's no old business tonight, so basically, that's it. And being that there's nothing else to discuss, and it's...
We need action.
No, we don't need action unless we want to, we want to deny that request? Mr. Hartman, do we need to deny that request?
No.
Okay.
I just want to know that.
Okay, very good. All right, then, we'll go ahead and adjourn, and thank you all for coming, and we made it under an hour tonight. So, this meeting is adjourned.